Thank you, Ms. Haywood. Good evening, board members. I'm going to ask Dr. Tony Vladu, Director of Secondary Instruction, to please come to the podium. His presentation this evening will provide an update on the percentage of advanced diploma graduates achieving the college and career standard on the SAT. Dr. Vladu.
Good evening, Ms. Haywood, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. This evening, I'll provide you with an update on our strategic goal relating to college and career readiness. Goal one of the strategic plan states that York County school students will consistently demonstrate growth and excellence in their skills and knowledge needed to be productive citizens. One objective on the goal two states that by FY17, the number of advanced studies diploma graduates achieving the college and career standard on the SAT will increase four percentage points over and above the percentage earned in 2012. This past year was the first year all students took the redesigned SAT test. Before I begin reviewing our progress on this goal, I want to take a few moments to summarize these changes for our view in public. First, the essay was optional on the redesigned tests as many colleges do not require these scores for admission. Second, the test is out of 1,600 points while the old test was out of 2,400 points to reflect the optional essay. If students chose to complete the essay portion of the test, it was reported separately. Third, as you may remember, the old format included a deduction for incorrect answers. The new format uses a write-only scoring which does not penalize students for guessing. Fourth, the redesigned SAT test is also shorter in duration. While under the old test, students were allowed three hours and 45 minutes, the new test takes three hours to complete without the optional essay. If students chose to take the essay portion of the exam, this section added another 15 minutes to the test. Fifth, there's also an updated college and career rating standard of 10-10 out of 1,600 points under the new test. This level of performance predicts a 75% likelihood of earning at least a C in a first semester college course in a related subject. Lastly, the redesigned test also included test subscores for every test section, thus providing additional insight to students, parents, college admission officers, and school counselors. Due to the completely redesigned SAT test, as well as a new college and career benchmark, any comparisons with previous performance should not be made. As I said, based on these changes, no comparisons with previous SATs should be made. Before I begin to review our progress, I would like to take a moment to go over this graph. The blue bars represent annual targets while the green bars represent performance under the old SAT test. From FY13 to FY16, performance on this goal was measured by the percentage of students that earn the advanced diploma studies, the advanced studies diploma, and a combined score of 1,550 on the SAT for critical reading, mathematics, and writing sections. As I stated earlier, the redesigned SAT test college readiness standard is 10-10 out of 1,600 points, representing the likelihood of earning a C during the first semester in a college-related course. Now, I want to draw your attention to the performance of our advanced diploma students on the redesigned SAT test. As you can see by the purple bar, 85% of graduating seniors on the advanced diploma earn a combined score equal or greater than 10-10. As you look at this performance, it's important to remember that not only is the total score different, the college board readiness benchmark is also different from the previous test. As no comparisons may be made with the old SATs, examining the performance of our students on the redesigned test with national and state averages for public school students is a better indicator of our performance. The data on this slide shows the performance of all YCSD students. On this chart, the gray bars indicate national SAT performance. The blue bars represent Virginia SAT performance while the green bars represent York County School Division SAT performance on the redesigned test. Though these comparisons may not be made with a previous test, one thing remains consistent: York County School Division students consistently outperform both state and national averages in evidence-based reading and writing, math, and the combined SAT scores by wide margins. I also want to take a moment to share another measure that speaks to the college readiness of York County School Division students. Last year, seniors took almost 300 ACT tests. Like the SAT, the ACT is also accepted by all colleges for admissions. Scores of 18 or higher in English, 22 or higher in math, and reading, and 23 or higher in science predict a 50% or higher likelihood of earning a B or higher, or 75% likelihood of earning a C or higher in a corresponding course during the first year in college. Our results show that this past school year, York County School Division graduates are notably better prepared to be successful during their first year in college. As I conclude this presentation, I want to take a few moments to review our next steps. Two years ago, the board prioritized and funded the PSATs for all 10th graders. This past October 11, for the second year in a row, all of our 10th graders took the PSATs at no cost. Providing all 10th graders with the opportunity to take the PSATs results in additional preparation time for the SATs, and it improves the college and career readiness of all students. The results of the October PSATs will be provided to students in December. Once results arrive, students will have the opportunity to link the college board accounts to Khan Academy. In doing so, they will receive individualized mini lessons that are tailored to the areas of weakness which will better prepare them for the SATs. To support our schools, professional development was provided to all high school principals. Additionally, two weeks ago at the October Secondary School Counselor Meeting, the college board has provided training on reports and data available from these tests to inform discussions with students and parents. Last year, 52% of 10th graders linked the college board and Khan Academy accounts, thus accessing individualized mini lessons. I want to take this opportunity to inform our view in public that all students that took the PSATs this past October already have a personalized SAT program, and they are ready to link those accounts. In linking the college board accounts to Khan Academy, they already have that personalized SAT preparation program. Our schools and principals have set goals and identified action steps to increase the number of college board and Khan Academy-linked accounts. Lastly, as we have concluded reporting on this strategic objective, as a result of the new strategic plan objectives, moving forward, we will report on the performance of all students on the PSATs. We're excited by the direction of the new plan as all students will be included in this measurement. So this concludes my strategic plan update. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present the hard work of our students, teachers, and families. At this time, I open the presentations to your questions and comments.
Board members have questions or comments?
I have a question. Tony, do you see a title? It's a question for you or whoever. When the SATs are not going to be used. I know there's certain, you know, I think JMU now has decided they're not requiring the SATs. So I'm just curious what the forward thinking we have in terms of that, and how much time we put into it now, and how much emphasis we put on it.
We were just with some counselors this afternoon, and they stated that in writing those letters and college admission packets for students, it's still a pretty important measure that colleges use. I think as we are transitioning to the profile of a graduate and preparing all students, I think it's going to have less of a focus because there are other things that we can prepare our students for, jobs right here in our community. We talked a little bit about cybersecurity and opportunities and the career field. But I have not heard anything specific. Do colleges do look at that SAT score? I know if you're applying to any of the state universities, they have a cut point for that SAT which really impacts whether you get admitted or not to that college.
My only question, the changes that were made in the SAT that came from the state Department of Education. I know you mentioned getting ready, looking at the graduate of the future, the high schools of the future, just what does public education look like? These changes in the SAT, especially for people at home, came about through State Department, Education Department, state level.
It is a national change from the college board. So whether you're in Virginia, or Hawaii, or anywhere, the changes apply to all students the same. It has made it more relatable to the skills our students are accustomed to in public schools. A lot more critical thinking, a lot more real-world skills. Overall, those changes are summarized as a...
More realistic.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for explaining the old one versus the new one.
That's right. We're back to 1,600.
The next presentation on the strategic plan update on Goal Three, Objective: Professional Development Instructional.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to ask Dr. Karen Kegel to come to the podium. Her presentation will highlight some of the professional development activities that were offered during the FY17 school year and throughout the summer in preparation for FY18. Dr. Kegel.
Thank you for the introduction. Good evening, Mrs. Haywood, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. This evening, I will provide you with an update on professional development for licensed staff. Within this update, I will highlight some of the professional development activities that we provided last school year and this summer to support Goal Three of the York County School Division's strategic plan. This presentation will close out our old strategic plan. However, the objective carries over to our new plan with minor revisions. Goal Three states that all staff will participate annually in a high-quality professional development program. In order to provide this, efforts are made to have professional development that is job embedded and purposeful. Continuous training that supports the diverse needs of teachers and administrators provides opportunities for them to apply the new knowledge and skills learned. We use the information such as standardized test scores, site-based assessment results, and classroom walkthrough data to identify specific needs for training. We also seek the input into topics from teachers and administrators, as well as use those who have expertise in specific areas to provide training. When you look at the previous York County School strategic plan, the instructional focus areas that emerge include closing achievement gaps in math, English, and federal graduation indicator, developing and implementing literacy models at elementary and secondary levels, providing educational experiences that support high levels of student engagement, and engaging students in learning opportunities that include research, oral and written communication, and collaboration. Tonight, I will provide you with a brief summary of some of the training that has been provided to our staff in these areas. We kicked off the 2016-17 school year with our division and site-based leaders attending a full day of professional training on professional learning communities. The work of PLCs is guided by four critical questions. What is it we want our students to know and be able to do? How will we know if each student has learned it? How will we respond when some students do not learn it? And how will we extend the learning to students who have demonstrated proficiency? Professional development in this area continued throughout the school year as teachers and administrators engaged in the PLC process, focusing on improved learning for students and continuous job embedded learning for educators. In order to support implementation, principals develop skills and knowledge during monthly principal meetings, and they in turn set expectations and provide a training and support in the work of collaborative teams and their individual buildings. Last year was the fourth year of training in the area of tiered systems of supports. Eleven school teams participated in a series of three trainings throughout the school year. The teachers and administrators on those teams then provided building-level professional development based on the need of their building staff. Division-level teams, led by the directors of elementary and secondary instruction, provided coaching support to schools throughout the year. Coaching sessions involved classroom observations, review of student formative assessment data, and identification of next steps to provide access to the curriculum and to improve student outcomes. In addition, training was provided on programs designed to close the achievement gaps. Two sessions of level literacy intervention training were provided to special education teachers during the school year, and trainings on Vmath, Transmath, and Inside Algebra were provided to math and special education teachers at individual schools as needed. Also, preschool teachers attended six half-day workshops that included practical, hands-on, instructional activities and strategies designed to support a strong foundation for learning. Each quarter throughout the school year, English learner program staff continued to receive professional development in comprehension, instruction, building vocabulary, and developing written and oral language skills for our English language learners. Each school has two teachers who serve as instructional trainers. These individuals receive specific professional development, and they in turn provide training to the teachers and their schools. Last year, our elementary instructional trainers focused on writer's workshop. This year, they began training on word study during the summer and will continue providing professional development to their colleagues in this area. In addition, K-5 parent educators received training on reading strategies to support classroom instruction. To support the work of our professional learning communities, coordinators for English instruction and directors provided site-based professional development on unpacking the curriculum. Secondary instructional trainers received and provided site-based training on strategic reading in the different content areas. Middle school English teachers had the opportunity to participate in optional online literacy training during the school year. In addition, over the summer, 90% of our middle school English teachers, as well as 10 special education teachers, attended the Middle School Literacy Academy. During this optional two-day workshop, participants learned strategies for engaging students in high-yield reading and writing Professional development also included topics and resources that support higher-order thinking and problem solving. We continued to offer training on junior grade books to the gifted cluster teachers at the elementary level. During this training, teachers learned how to utilize junior grade books within their literacy instruction. Additional grade level and one-on-one trainings were provided. Thirty teachers attended optional summer training for number talks. This is a daily or weekly math routine that supports number sense and computational fluency through specific structured conversations around mental math, problem solving. Math exemplars are performance tasks that promote problem solving, critical thinking, communication, and support students in applying math concepts in meaningful real-life situations. Exemplar training was an ongoing training throughout the school year with three teachers from each elementary school. We also provided additional workshops on performance tasks. We continued professional development in the area of project-based learning. Sixty teachers attended three days of intensive training led by instructional coordinators and our educational technology facilitators. The participants created and defined PBL projects to be implemented during the school year. A cohort of 11 secondary science teachers participated in six days of training focused on creating meaningful watershed educational experiences for students. The main component of environmental literacy is the health of the Chesapeake Bay and local watersheds. During the summer, principals, assistant principals, and central office personnel participated in three days of professional development during Leadership Academy. Assessment and compliance coordinators and two of our lead teachers from each school joined building administrators on day one and learned how strengths-based leadership supports the PLC process. In addition, participants had the opportunity to learn from each other during roundtable presentations. Throughout the event, various trainings were provided based on feedback, need, and the strengths of our division. Another summer opportunity was the Region Two Excellence Through Equity Conference. School leaders from across the region met to deepen their understanding of equity for all students by sharing best practices that can be implemented in schools. A teacher leader or school counselor from each of our schools attended the event and returned with information to share with colleagues. Also this summer, school-based teams of administrators, teachers, school counselors, and/or nurses attended an eight-hour interactive course on recognizing and responding to warning signs of mental health issues and crisis in children. On August 24, licensed personnel attended our Professional Learning Day, which focused on embracing, engaging, and empowering our students. Keynote speaker, Dr. Allison Sampson-Jackson, shared relevant and timely information on behavioral health and resilience. This was followed by teachers attending breakout sessions on a variety of topics: on teaching and learning strategies, school climate, technology integration, classroom management, and behavioral health. Sixty-two of the 89 sessions offered were facilitated or co-facilitated by our own YCSD personnel to include classroom teachers and support staff. Several of our teachers provided feedback following the Professional Learning Day. This slide shows one of the emails we received. "It is important for me to share how much Thursday's professional development impacted me personally and professionally. I know these events are incredibly difficult to plan logistically to ensure it meets the needs of the entire district. You overwhelmingly succeeded. As a drama teacher at Tab Middle, I have a wonderful opportunity to make connections daily. I approach this year with a desire to love my students with more intention. However, after last Thursday's session, I now consider it my mission and calling. Dr. Allison Jackson's influence and inspirational message has now become a defining moment with answers that I have been asking for many years. The flow, cohesion, and unity of the morning prove that you all are deeply connected to the needs of students and teachers. Thank you for a wonderful morning. Keep doing great things this year, and I wish you all a very successful school year." York County recognizes the importance of supporting new teachers and administrators. In August, we welcomed over 70 new teachers into the school division. During new teacher orientation, they received training in a variety of areas, including professional learning communities, instructional technology, literacy, content-specific information, and special education. A new addition this year was a session where a panel of our current York County teachers answered questions from our new secondary teachers. New teachers also received support from mentors throughout the school year. Some of our best teachers are selected to participate in mentor training through a program developed with the College of William &amp; Mary. The school division also provides ongoing support for new special education teachers in areas such as IEP development, goal setting, behavior intervention plans, and data collection. Last year, school year, 20 new special education teachers attended training sessions that supported them in their role as a special education teacher. Recognizing various needs and interests of our teachers and administrators, we offered a number of optional workshops throughout the summer, such as Number Talks and the Middle School Literacy Academy. As noted throughout this presentation, these were well-attended. Other optional series include EdCamp EVA and the YCSD Twitter Chat. In April of 2015, we hosted the first EdCamp East of Virginia. This unconference, held on a Saturday, is open to all educators across the state or beyond, and includes a day of professional sharing on topics that are selected by the participants. Last year, EdCamp EVA was held at both the fall and the spring. The YCSD Twitter Chat is an online discussion each Wednesday evening for those interested in learning about a topic or sharing ideas. Topics have included growth mindset, family engagement, and personalized professional development. Participants vary each week. However, the chat is attended by teachers, administrators, and central office staff. Chats have been moderated by an ETF, special education teacher, instructional specialist, assistant principal, and offensive. We will continue to review teacher feedback and student performance data as we plan and implement high-quality targeted professional development that aligns to the division's new strategic plan. Thank you for allowing me to share the work we are doing in the area of professional development. At this time, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a quick comment. It's exciting to go into the schools and see the learning going on in the school. But I was able to attend the Leadership Academy this year, and of course, the professional development at the high school when all the teachers came back. And Dr. Jackson was phenomenal. But when you can see the learning there, you get to be more excited because you know it's going to spill back over into the classroom. So excellent job. Keep it up. Thank you.
If, how would a new teacher go about, if they needed more help, they felt like they weren't prepared, they've been through the orientation, what would they do? Would they go to the principal? Would they come to you? How would they do that?
Now, are brand-new teachers, brand-new to teaching, have a one-on-one mentor within the building?
Is that for extended period of time?
It's for their first year.
Entire year.
And then if they're new to the division, but they've taught somewhere else before, there's a lead mentor in the building as well. So that lead mentor also provides support.
They'd probably go to the mentor if they had them. And what type of metrics do you have for evaluating that? I mean, you know, the problem with new teachers, if they do have complaints, sometimes they're maybe not going to want to do it. They're brand-new. So I'm just curious. What type of evaluation do you have? And what have you heard? I mean, they're overwhelmingly feeling prepared and supported?
It's very interesting you should ask because last year, about mid-year, we decided we wanted to hear from those new teachers because we planned that beginning-of-the-year PD for them. And sometimes they don't know what they need at the beginning of the year. So the question comes up mid-year, was there something else we could have addressed with you? Is there some better way we can provide you support? And overwhelmingly, we get really good feedback. We get some tips and ideas that we can, you know, utilize in the program that we're working with. So those kinds of things help us continue to tweak and plan. But overwhelmingly, there's the support there. I think one of the areas we want to work on most is making sure we match the right mentor with the right new teacher, especially for those isolated positions.
We also made changes to this year's new teacher orientation based on the feedback that we received from the teachers. We worked on individualizing it more so teachers weren't sitting in general sessions, getting information about a wide variety of topics, but more specific to their needs.
Feedback directly from the new teachers?
That's from our, yes.
We differentiated more. The new teacher panel, the panel of our current teachers was very well-received. And so, and again, we take that feedback from them and try to work off that feedback they provide.
And also, Dr. George, you're asking about data. We do survey the new teachers mid-year and end of year on the mentoring program itself so that we can make programmatic improvements.
Great. Great presentation.
I like the presentation also. Now, my question comes a different way. Budget concerns. And as we move into that budget, you've talked about a wide variety of things that you have used to accomplish all that you have accomplished. Budget-wise, are we meeting your needs? I know, Dr. Shandor, I've gone around and said, yeah, we didn't think of this part, right?
I would say that we've been really excellent stewards of the dollars. I think we've been really strategic on what we're working on. And when you cultivate that culture to get feedback from the folks and see what they want. We hire a lot of smart people. There's a lot of really good leaders, obviously, great educators. And, you know, I love going to the new teacher orientation each year and seeing 70, 75 of them, and then seeing them in their schools the first week and then seeing... and then seeing them in their schools the first week, and then seeing them again in a few weeks, just to hear, you know, that authentic feedback to say, you know, wow, I've been in a number of different divisions, and I really like the way you guys are purposeful and thoughtful of how we receive professional development. Many educators, and I think many of them in this room, have sat in sessions where it's just a sit-and-get for everyone, and we're trying to move away from that.
I guess I'm saying, when it comes down to budget, are we providing the appropriate dollar amount to meet the professional development opportunities, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? Because as we look at budget for next year?
I, I will speak to the fact that we do use grants to pay for our instructional trainers, so as those grants come to an end, we will have a need to address that. We have also done a lot of optional training in the summer, and have been blessed that teachers choose to come to that training in the summer for sometimes four days of, of eight to four training, and we get, we get large numbers of teachers that come to that training, and we're not, we don't have the money to pay them to come. We have teachers that go, advanced placement, college board advanced placement teachers, who go to training, and again, that's a four-day training, four- or five-day training, that they go to in the summer, that they're not compensated for, but I, most of the time, if it's good, valuable training, they appreciate that. I'm sure they would appreciate stipends that would go along with that, too, but what we try to do is make it well worth their time, because we do have a large number of teachers that are very interested in growing as a professional, and so if we can provide them with good quality professional development, it also would be nice to have, we cut back the funds that went to schools years ago. They still get funds to pay for professional development opportunities for their teachers, but that was cut back somewhat a few years back.
I don't think you can overstate the importance of professional development, not just from the standpoint of support for the teachers, but that's one of the big things that they look for when they're looking for a job. And, you know, over and over, they say professional development, so I'm just, I'm glad that we are, I like to think we're leading the way in, in professional development. I think it's incredibly important, so.
Here's one quick question, and that is, how much of this training applies to recertification at their periodic, does it all apply, or?
They get points for recertification, towards their recertification.
So all of it does apply to, to, to?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the third presentation is the update, is professional development on the operations side.
Yes, so I'm going to ask Ms. Cheryl Parr if she'll please come to the podium, so she actually has back-to-back presentations, and I think she should stop midway to ask for questions on her first one, so I'll, I'll throw it over to Ms. Parr.
Thank you, Dr. Sheen Dorick. Good evening, Mrs. Haywood, members of the board, and Dr. Sheen Dorick. Tonight, I will provide an update for certain objectives for Goals Three and Four on our previous strategic plan, specifically highlighting actions that resulted in the achievement of these goals. As you know, the ability to hire and then retain a quality staff is crucial to our success. As Dr. Kegel just shared, supporting our staff members, whatever their roles may be, through a high-quality professional development plan is very important. She also described instructional training provided them last year by our Department of Instruction. Operational training provided during that timeframe allowed for both licensed and non-licensed staff to participate in learning opportunities for safety, as well as many different management procedures. Information was presented by various directors and associate directors, as well as our coordinator for non-licensed professional development. In the past year, operations and school administration staff have worked with new teachers and substitute teachers to provide information about such topics as classroom management and safety procedures. During administrative professional learning communities, important operating procedures were highlighted to ensure our processes support our strategic plan goals. Often, this information was then taken and shared with school staffs. Professional development was also provided for new employees, clerical staff, bus drivers, maintenance staff, and school nurses. While some information presented to non-licensed staff focused on procedural tasks, part of it addressed specific job tasks. One example is technology sessions provided for our clerical staff members. Because our IT department ensured this group had the knowledge needed to work with our student management system, a direct link was provided for student support. In the past year, each of these groups benefited from professional development aligned to support the mission of their specific work. While professional development originates from school division leadership, we are fortunate to work very closely with additional county agencies that help support this work. Fire and life safety assisted us with providing safety training, along with the York, Picus, and Sheriff's Office. By tapping into their expertise levels, we expanded our work, ensuring that it was high-quality. The same is noted for the partnership we enjoy with our Assistant County Attorney, who provided valuable input for information that we needed to disseminate to stakeholder Some professional development sessions are face-to-face, while other learning takes place online, as with our Safe Schools Program. YCSD staff members are required to complete learning modules for the topics you see listed here, and then pass a mastery assessment. This is a yearly requirement for all of our staff members. A new operational professional development program started last year was Trigo Ed Training. Trigo Ed methods help schools confidently address big challenges by teaching school leaders how to solve complex administrative issues. Participants determine causes of unexpected problems and develop meaningful solutions for them while building commitment amongst stakeholders. With last year's training, and a recent training that was held last week, we now have almost fifty persons trained in this effective decision-making process. Numerous times this school year, we have already implemented methods that we've learned to help us reach effective solutions while continuing to focus on what's best for students. Any questions about the information that I've provided thus far about professional development or operations for all staff, licensed or non-licensed, and then also for our non-licensed staff? Any particular avenues or aspects of that?
Questions?
My one question. We have seen so much in the news lately about bullying, and I know we have tightened up our student conduct code on bullying and how we handle it, and the hotline to call and so forth. Are we comfortable at a school division level that we've done all we can do, and we, we're running a tight ship? I guess I should.
Yes. In just a moment, I'm going to share a little more information about bullying as we get into school relationships with students and with families. However, to address that specific question, schools have individually, at all locations, provided some information to staffs, of course, about bullying and how we can work together to prevent that. This year, we are continuing on with a bullying prevention committee to further expand what we've done and how we can move that along further. That's being directed by Dr. Butler from School Administration, and we've already met one time, and the staff members that were involved really did a nice job of identifying what we're currently doing, and then how we can move that information forward.
Thank you.
I will now provide for you an update regarding accomplishments for Goal Four. The objectives listed here support our division's goal of promoting positive relationships, as well as fostering effective partnerships with families. This includes facilitating two-way communications with our families. Our Department of School Administration works closely with schools to implement bullying prevention strategies, which ensures we provide education about the prevention of bullying to all students, as well as the implementation of positive activities which focus on relationship-building between students. During the month of October, we always celebrate National Bullying Prevention Month, designed to expand awareness about bullying. Throughout the entire year last year, schools implemented numerous activities to support this effort, so learning was not a one-time event, but ongoing. Character development is also very important for the objective of building positive relationships. Last year, all nineteen of our schools implemented strategies to further expand positive relationships by making connections with students. Pictures that you see here highlight bucket filling at Waller Mill Elementary, designed to focus on the contributions of every student. Positive relationships thrive in an environment that focuses on how we treat others. Each of our schools focused on this in different ways in 2016, 2017. At Dare Elementary, Yorktown Middle, and Queens Lake Middle, the green zone is used. As you know, from the recent Accent on Academics presentation provided by the Dare staff, this is a process for monitoring self-behavior. Staff members provide instruction that ultimately moves students from being told how to act to truly thinking for themselves regarding the choices that they make. Another part of Goal Four is the facilitation of school-family relationships. This includes creating welcoming school environments and having effective two-way communication with our families. Each school implemented strategies focusing on this effort. Part of this objective focuses on providing information about community resources for our families. We also partnered with military liaisons to provide support for military students specifically. Last year, several school leaders attended a national family engagement conference. Strategies learned will help provide a focus for this year's work, to include the establishment of a family engagement committee to expand our current efforts. An important component of building school-family relationships is the opportunity for parent learning, as well as student learning. Our schools continue to invite parents to parent workshops about a variety of topics related to helping their children succeed in school. The pictures you see here are of a family engagement night held last year for parents of English-language learners, sponsored by ELL staff at Dare, Seaford, and TAB Elementary Schools. Over seventy persons gathered for dinner and a strategy show about helping elementary students learn, while high school students from TAB High and York High provided fun activities for the younger children. A part of Goal Four is that schools and departments will provide data to measure the facilitation of strong school-family partnerships. One example is the number of volunteers and volunteer hours at each location. For the past couple of years, YCSD has benefited from approximately ninety thousand volunteer hours each year. In the past year, we saw an increase of almost two thousand volunteers. These persons truly help us achieve our goals with the effort and time they freely give to support what we do. At the current rate for minimum wage, last year's volunteers saved the division six-hundred thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars, which I know you agree is a lot of Effective two-way communication is extremely important for engaging families. In the past year, the division's social media content was expanded and saw opportunities for engagement through a twenty-five percent growth rate on Facebook and a nineteen percent growth rate on Twitter. Through the efforts of our Community and Public Relations Office, YCSD recently launched a mobile app platform which already has more than six thousand downloads. Some of the features include school and athletic calendars, which can be synced to a user's personal calendars, all social media and website feeds in one location, another link to the division's online incident reporting system, as well as a general feedback option. A key component for building school and family relationships is ensuring our local elective officials and business leaders have a better understanding of York County's public education system. Last year, YCSD launched the inaugural Principal for a Day program. Throughout the month of November in 2016, participants spent time in our buildings to experience many of the regular duties that school leaders face each day. Last week, we had nineteen business and community leaders participate in our second annual Principal for a Day experience, which helped us expand the knowledge base of what we accomplish in our schools. And I know a couple of you had the opportunity to do that last week, and we appreciate that very much. Lastly, throughout fiscal year seventeen, the division developed a new strategic plan for fiscal years eighteen through twenty-two. In the initial development stages, staff conducted twenty-six focus group sessions with parents and staff. During these sessions, participants were asked to identify the skills, knowledges, and experiences a YCSD graduate should have to prepare them for college and career success. They were also invited to provide feedback through an online survey on the objectives in the existing strategic plan, and were given the opportunity to write specific objectives in support of the five-goal statements that we had. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to provide an update for you on, on both of these goals. I'm happy to answer any questions about the goal updates for you that you may have.
Comments, questions?
One more comment on the Principal for a Day. Again, participated, and I think you did, too.
Yeah, me, too. That's fantastic.
What a great, what a great program, something we need to continue.
I was at TAB Elementary. Got to dance first thing in the morning.
I saw you on Twitter.
You saw what?
I saw you dancing on Twitter.
Oh dear.
Oh dear.
Better get on Twitter, I've never been on.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parr.
Thank you.
Okay, now, proposed capital improvement plan.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. All right. Board members, our next presentation is going to be Mr. Bill Bowen, Chief Financial Officer. His presentation is going to update the board on some recent changes to the CIP, and he's going to review the debt service schedule related to school projects and review the next steps in the CIP process. Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. This is Haywood, members of the board. This evening, I'm presenting the superintendent's proposed capital improvements program for fiscal years 2019 through 2024. A copy has been provided to you this evening. The basis of the CIP is a six-years facilities master plan that was presented in detail by Mr. Sheerhart and Dr. James at the October sixth work session. My plan for this evening is to provide an overview of the CIP, walk you through the changes that we've made since our last work session. I will review the debt service schedule and then conclude with our next steps. So I'll begin with the top of the summary page here, and we'll see that this is fiscal years 2019 through 2024. As we talk about the CIP and the funding, what's, it's important to note that what we're really concerned about is, is for fiscal year nineteen. All of the out-years, that'd be, that would be twenty twenty through 2024, are just for planning purposes. Once the school board adopts the CIP, what will be under consideration by the Board of Supervisors is funding for FY nineteen. Another thing I want to mention here is the footnote below. For FY seventeen, the Board of Supervisors began improving the school division's CIP based on the total allocation of funds and not individual projects. This was a positive move for the school division, because it allows the staff to reprioritize projects as needed without having to go back to the county for approval. If we look at the second table, you'll, you'll note that our, the school division has begun to align its funding with the expected funding commitments from the county. In prior years, what was adopted by the school board was often much higher than what was approved by the county. And the table at the bottom of the page, and looking at the superintendent's draft proposed, the funding targets that the school division is using have been provided by the county. We're using a funding target of nine million dollars, with the exception of fiscal years twenty and twenty-one, where the county has provided us targets of seventeen and a half and fifteen million dollars respectively, respectively, I'm sorry, and these higher targets include the new elementary school. These next slides are the detailed projects, but I'm, I'm not going to, it's not my intent to, to go into the detailed projects this evening. What I'd like to do next is to walk you through the, the changes. Let me begin with the Coventry Elementary School project. It's a project to replace the windows and create a security vestibule. Since our last work session, staff has reduced FY eighteen expected project by a hundred thousand dollars, and we've transferred that hundred thousand dollars to the TAB Middle School project to replace the roof, HVAC, and windows. This change was required because the estimated cost of A&E services for the TAB Middle School project came in higher than originally anticipated. So when we reduced the Coventry project of FY eighteen, we shifted the cost, the hundred thousand dollars in cost to FY nineteen. To account for this shift, staff is scaling back the roof project at Seaford Elementary by fifty thousand dollars, and scaling back the York High School Annex Project by fifty thousand dollars, and moving those up to the Coventry project. And the final, the final item to note is the gym floor at Dare Elementary School. This is not a change, but a clarification. As we begin to update our gym floors at the elementary schools, the standard we're using is a resilient or a rubber floor. The floor, in this case, at Dare Elementary, is a wood floor, and this, this needed to be done in order to support the Parks and Rec Skate, Rattle, and Roll Program. So this project, as noted here, will be a cash-flunded project by the county and will not, will not be included in the debt service for the schools. One other item I wanted to mention, and this is not included in the CIP, but staff has had preliminary discussions about the re-imaging of the high school media centers. We recognize that there's a need to We recognize that there's a need to update our media centers, and in doing so, we want to determine if we can create more collaborative workspaces for the students, upgrade the current technology and infrastructure. So in the next couple of months, staff will be engaging the principals, media specialists, and other stakeholders for their input. So this is something we'll be talking about in the coming months. Next thing I want to jump to is the debt service. As we talk about funding, and in particular the operating budget, it's always a good thing to remind ourselves of the county's commitment to funding our CIP. As mentioned earlier, the county has provided the school division with a funding target of nine million dollars. The annual debt service of this nine million dollars is approximately seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year. For fiscal years twenty and twenty-one, our funding targets total thirty-two and a half million dollars. And again, this is for the new elementary school. The debt service for, for the new school will be approximately two point seven million a year. What's currently reflected here in the debt service, in this chart, is only the debt that the county has issued. So the debt for our seventeen and FY eighteen projects has yet to be issued, so those amounts are not reflected in this chart. And finally, our next steps, we'll be publishing the superintendent's proposed CIP this week. We'll have a public hearing, a public hearing on the CIP at the school board meeting on November twentieth. The school board will consider amendments to the CIP at the next work session on December fourth, and on December eighteenth, the school board will consider approving the CIP. Once approved, the CIP will be forwarded to the board of supervisors for consideration during their budget process. And that concludes my presentation this evening, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions you have.
Any comments or questions?
I don't think so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Attendant Zones Committee update?
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. So our next presentation, Dr. James is going to provide an update to the board related to the overview of this committee's work. So I'll turn it over to Dr. James.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Just stay with me for it. Tonight, I'll provide you with an update about the work of the Attendant Zone Committee. What I'll do in making this presentation is go to the division's website. As you can see here, the banner just talked about elementary attendance zones reviewed. This is where information is available to the public about all the work of the committee, and it also has information about the timeline that we discussed last year about this particular work. So if someone wants to see all of that information, you're on the homepage of the division's website, under Learn About Elementary Attendance Zone Review. There's quite a bit of information here for anyone that wants to see what we've done thus far with elementary attendance zones. As you can see here, if you look at the middle of the page, we've had a host of meetings during the month of October, four as a matter of fact, and we have one scheduled for this Thursday night at the school board office at six thirty PM. This committee, starting back in early October, looked at the four plans, four options that were developed by the consultant. As you may recall, last spring, that was reviewed with the board during a retreat and is also shared with the public during the April work session. In addition to reviewing those plans, we looked at several data sets, including new developments, future students from those developments, as well as projected enrollment to get some idea, some sense of how changing those attendance zones would play out within school capacity, especially the school's instructional capacity. As you can see here on the timeline, and we discussed this many times last year about the timeline, but I'll just come down to phase four. And we're concluding, hopefully this Thursday night, we'll conclude phase three, which is the meeting with the Attendance Zone Committee that was comprised of parents from each of the ten elementary schools as well as five principals to have this discussion about how it looks for our attendance zones and what adjustments we can make going forward. You can see here, if the timeline stays the way it is now, I hope to bring a recommendation from the committee to the board on December fourth during the work session. And there we'll discuss all of the work of the committee as well as what the proposed recommendations are going to be for the board's consideration. Immediately after that meeting, we will post all of that information on the website as well as send an email to staff and parents in the community to make them aware that the committee has made a recommendation to the board, and they'll have the opportunity to speak about that recommendation during a public hearing on December the eighteenth. That's the December regular meeting. After that, we'll still have another opportunity to discuss those recommendations in early January at the work session before, it'll come before the board for approval of those particular attendance zones. So that's our process going forward.
So that whatever is approved will be in place for the next school year?
Yes, ma'am, that's a very good point. The proposal is going to be beginning with the twenty eighteen slash nineteen school year. Kind of hard to talk about that far out in time, but twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. You can also see on this webpage, there's quite a bit of information about the presentation that happened before the board, as well as the minutes of each of the committee meetings, also the existing attendance zones. All that information is of course on this website for staff and the community to look at what we have done thus far with reviewing and making recommendations to balance the elementary attendance zones. There are questions I can entertain for you at this time.
If my parent is looking tonight and hears your presentation, and they go to the website and look around and have concerns or questions, should they approach the committee now or should they wait until the public hearing and ask a lot of questions?
I would see that as a two-fold process. They can certainly contact me if any concerns and questions I may answer now, and certainly all systems will have an opportunity during the public hearing to share their views on this particular matter.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Dr. James. We have one more presentation.
Joint Healthcare Purchasing Flexibility Study.
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Jim Carroll, Chief Human Resources Officer, and Mr. Bowen. They're going to present a summary of the report and staff recommendation for continuing the phase two of a possible free phase study. Dr. Carroll?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. I think we're ready.
I can't go to commercial camp. I think she'll find it pretty quick.
Thank you, Catherine.
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll try that again. Dr. Carroll?
This is Haywood, members of the board. Tonight, I'll present an update on the Joint Healthcare Purchasing Flexibility Study. You'll recall that last December, the board of supervisors invited this board to participate in a joint healthcare study. The board agreed and staff began collaborating. In the spring, an RFP was issued to identify a consultant to complete three, the study in three phases upon approval of each. Wells Fargo Insurance was the selected vendor. In August, Wells Fargo Insurance presented a report to a joint committee that included a projection for savings across the two entities of at least one point two million dollars to our health and dental plans. And in October, we had a follow-up meeting to address further questions that our staff had for the consultant after reviewing the report. Highlights from the report include findings of the consultant. They found that the county had eight hundred and sixty-two employees on their medical and dental health plans. When you combine that with the larger group from the schools, our purchasing power would be over two thousand members, which the consultant believes gives us a lot more buying power. They also found that the health and dental plans of the county and the schools are comparable, both in the benefits that they offer and from an actuarial perspective. When we look at the total claims cost, the consultant found that our cost for claims per employee is three point five percent lower than the county. However, when we broke out just pharmacy claims, the consultant says that on average nationally, you should have about twenty-five percent of your claims be from pharmacy, and we ran, as the county ran around that level, we were running about seven percent higher. The consultant purported that there were some potential advantages with joint purchasing, including better net costs and cost management tools, enhanced administration and performance, greater access to quality programs, enhanced employee satisfaction, shared resources on plan management, administration, and communication, and timeline consolidation. The consultant also included four potential disadvantages with joint purchasing, including that we would now have to have a combined decision-making process whenever looking to change the plan. Obviously, going into the phase two, we would have to negotiate that RFP, which could be difficult. Third, structuring the plan to avoid one party subsidizing the costs of another. And last, if we get to implementation, the administrative burden of performing that implementation. So the consultant came down with four final recommendations. First was that both entities should create individual and collective decision-making processes to enable meeting purchasing deadlines. Second, that both of the entities can continue to have the common carrier and should have a common reinsurance limit. At this point, we're fifty thousand dollars off on that. Third, that the employer contribution strategies do not need to be identical, but both the county and the schools have an opportunity to revisit it since we're looking at the whole process. And finally, that medical and dental elections could continue to be separate but could be purchased jointly. I'm sorry. So, staff has given the report full consideration and recommends continuing the study into phase two, considering the potential savings and the uncertainty of the health markets currently and in the foreseeable future. Given that, staff feels that certain parameters need to be in place to protect the best features of our current plan. Staff is of the opinion that the following parameters would need to be present in the RFP structure as we move forward. First, that we need to emphasize the pharmacy carve-out as this has the most promise for savings to the health plan. Next, that we would need to outline that the request of proposals be aimed at joint purchase while retaining our self-funded status. Third, the contribution percentages would remain the purview of each entity. We would be looking for no reduction of current substantial benefits to our personnel. We'd also be looking to limit any disruption to current employees in terms of the medications that they're prescribed and the availability of physicians on their network. And the school division would not be looking to explore a post-H65 benefit. And then two other recommendations that wouldn't be involved in the RFP. We would need to create a joint benefits committee between the county and the schools where neither side had a voting advantage. Both sides would need to concur with any changes to plan design in the out years, and both sides would agree to move their respective plans to a calendar year basis to make it easier for employees with regard to tracking their deductibles and out-of-pocket maximums. That concludes my update. Mr. Bowen and I, who, Mr. Bowen's also been a part of the process, and we're both open to questions.
Actually, I, let me preface my comments first, is that I teach at Oldham University, I teach healthcare administration. I'm very, very much attuned to this healthcare process. What I, and even a glean from what Wells Fargo is proposing, the one point two million dollars that they would expect to see would be obviously from combining administrative tasks, and then this pharmacy piece. Well, the problem with the pharmacy piece is they're discussing it, is that both the county and the school district have Anthem right now is who they use, who provides a pharmacy benefit already, who already manages that benefit as part of the services they provide. Thus, going out to a third party, you would lose one major benefit that you currently have, and that is that the risk resides with Anthem for a bulk of the money on the table. And as a result, they talk to physicians, they tell physicians what kind of drugs they should be using, in what order, such as a first generation cephalosporin versus a fourth generation cephalosporin, there's a huge difference in cost. The benefits to the patient may be the same if they use a first generation cephalosporin first, reducing costs. Those kinds of decisions are ongoing on a daily basis provided by Anthem. The savings that they're proposing, which would be perhaps to a third party, would remove the risk from Anthem or whomever you get insurance from to manage down to that level with the provider. So they would tell the provider, prescribe what you want to provide. And the third party, such as Express Scripts or many other companies out there, do not have the same leverage with providers that the insurance company does, potentially actually costing money, not saving money. I am highly suspect of the Wells Fargo analysis. I, on the surface, see virtually no way you can make that kind of savings. My visceral sense at this point, and I would recommend to the board that we not go on to phase two, because I, we, potentially the county would save a significant amount of money on this contract if they canceled it now versus going to the final end. I do not see that this is beneficial to the York County School District at this time. One of the things I need to throw out there is I am currently engaged in consulting with a number of congressmen and senators on the future of our healthcare program. That is the main reason why I'm not running for office this particular round. There are going to be some significant changes. They are going to come down into our healthcare system over the next eighteen months, if everything works as everyone thinks it's going to fold out. I would recommend we hold off, see what comes out of conscience before you press ahead and try to come up with a joint healthcare program, my personal view of the world. With that, I can go on all night. With that, I will be quiet and throw it out to our chairman and go from there.
Chairman, did you all have a good day?
You know, for me, I think, I think the attractive part of it is the, sort of the strength in numbers. You know, you widen your pool, you do have some negotiating power perhaps.
If I may throw out, because you both have Anthem, Anthem is going to look at this as, why should I negotiate? I've already got you. And Anthem, for example, covers fifty-two percent of the entire state of all healthcare provided in the state of Virginia. They are the big player on the block. They're going to, you're going to have a hard time finding anybody that's going to be able to compete with their rates. To get them to come down would be very questionable. I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay, that's okay. Well, that's just, I think that's the part of it to me that probably is attractive, but I guess the, the big question, what is phase two?
Phase two is actually putting together an RFP, designing what you'd want the plans to look at, carving out the pharmacy, and putting it out on the street. So it has two, two pieces. First, if you were not to approve it in the long run, you'd just be verifying the numbers of the consultant. But if you did agree with it, you would be in position already to go ahead and go to phase three if the board, if both boards agreed and put out a contract to change your, possibly change your provider or not, but certainly a pharmacy carve-out was a piece of it, making that separate.
So Tyler, Anthem is your big concern, the fact that it's all Anthem?
It's not a concern. The concern is to do a carve-out. When you're already getting the service, offers no benefit and a potential loss. In other words, Anthem is already providing that service to manage your pharmacy. Do a third party to manage your pharmacy separately does not give you an advantage.
But suppose we weren't with Anthem?
You'd provide the same service by any, if you're going to have your pharmacy provided by- if you're going to have your pharmacy provided by Aetna or any of the other companies out there that might want to come to the table. They would provide that service as part of your contract. If you carve it out from that, then they are no longer at risk. They have no incentive to get physicians to manage their prescribing habits. The third party has no leverage with the physicians to change their providing, their prescribing patterns. So you potentially actually lose money in that process. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
So what you're saying is that we could potentially find out from a third party that it's cheaper, but in the long run, it's going to cost us more?
Potentially could cost you more. Could potentially cost you more. Certainly, no significant gain, anyway.
So how do we test that?
How do you test that?
Yeah. How do we, I mean, this, everything's theory right now, I guess. We don't know.
Well, it's, if you go and you look at the literature and you look at what other states have done and what other school districts and other entities have done, you find that most entities go to a combined pharmacy insurance program versus a separate third party, where the third party actually has some benefit. And you see it in TRICARE for the military, for example. They use Express Scripts. They provide a mail-order service and they provide a few other services that the military themselves cannot provide. And the Department of Defense dictates to Express Scripts what they will provide and at, basically, the man is a certain level. They manage, they manage Express Scripts and how Express Scripts provides your service. Totally different concept.
I suggest we take this topic, these questions, back to Wells Fargo and say, hey, this is a conversation we're having. Can you clear some things up for us? Maybe they can run some projections or whatever. But, you know, I appreciate what you're saying.
The other thing I would suggest is get specific detail from Wells Fargo as to what are their assumptions when they built their model that say, this is why you're going to get savings. And it would prove to me that what you say is going to actually occur. And where have you made it occur?
Wouldn't we get most of that with the RFP we put out?
Not necessarily, no.
And if I may weigh in, having worked with Wells Fargo in a previous school division, this seems to be their model. They, working in Henrico, they just carved out the pharmacy piece with their latest renewal. And it's just occurred in the spring, so there was no time to really see if the savings have actually been realized. But they were, they were proposing an upwards of 20% savings by carving out the pharmacy and remaining with Anthem. So there would be no change in that case with the insurance provider. But as Dr. Carroll mentioned, when we go out to bid, there's always a risk that Optima or United Health or Aetna may provide a better bid. And it's hard sometimes to ignore those cost savings.
The one thing that would be worth working at is to see what Eric was doing. But really, you need a two- to three-year track record to see how, whether physician prescribing patterns have become lax or are they maintaining some level of rigor to say, well, I'm just used to doing it this way. I'll continue to do it that way. There are incentives for providers, physicians in particular, to prescribe based on the last pharmacy rep that walked in their door. And they still get detailed daily. You know, they will have a long list of pharmacy reps that want to come in and see them on a monthly basis and get a monthly visit. They can't accept anything from like they used to in the old days, but they still get those visits. And there's a lot of influences provided by pharmacy detailers. And so I think over time, the rigor of, yeah, let's do a stepwise is going to, well, it's easier just to come to that fourth level of cephalosporin, which is now 300% more expensive than the first level of cephalosporin. So I throw that out. I have serious concerns. I'm not sure that there's any way they can justify the $1.2 million savings that they've come up with. You would have to pick apart their model and figure out exactly how they came up with that number. But I find that extremely hard to believe that that would net anywhere near that kind of money, considering the kind of program we already have.
I'm going to go back and as I listen to you all discuss this, I go back to two points. Quite a few years back, when we froze our teacher salaries, we had to provide benefits, excuse me, in some fashion. And one of the nice benefit packages was the health insurance package. And that, where we couldn't increase salary, we looked at health insurance, dental insurance packet. So I don't want to lose sight of what we do for our teachers and that's fair. When we met with the Board of Supervisors in 2016 and it was joining, you know, let's do this, one question I asked and it was understood that we can go ahead and do this study, but we're not committal. We have not, we don't have to do it. And I think we're looking at the data coming in now. You mentioned the state study. Have we found out any more from where we are with the state study?
Yes, the state released their rates just last week. We haven't done an in-depth analysis, but on first look, it looks like that's not going to be an option for us. I think on the employee plus one plans, we were looking at rates that were $300 higher than what we're offering right now. And that's just going to get worse.
For your starter.
If those rates aren't competitive for those people that are currently in the pool, then people will drop out. And maybe the FY '19 rates stay that way, but the FY '20 rates will get even worse. So we don't believe that's going to be an option.
Yeah, Barbara, just to point out, this specifically RFP to include, reduce no current substantial benefit for any YCSD personnel. I mean, that was clear from the beginning.
If we, and I want to make sure of that because if we give the consensus, it's not a vote, but it's a consensus, to move forward with Phase Two, and we don't like what we're getting back, we can stop.
Well, I would like to have honestly a little bit more information before. I don't know how we go about that. We go back to Wells Fargo and say, can we get a little more in-depth in terms of the numbers? You know, the 1.2 sounds great, but we'd really like to kind of see where that's going to go.
I think that's where staff is at this point. So I think we either move forward with the RFP if that's an option or we take back additional questions to Wells Fargo that we talked about. See, I know Ms. Ford and Ms. Goff have captured a lot of this conversation and a lot of the questions. So that may be an option.
Here's a question. Cost-wise, I know the county was funding this. If we move forward, do we share in some of the cost or?
No, no. The county's financing.
So everything moving forward, okay. Well, I think we owe it to ourselves to follow through on it. And if we're, you know, if it's a no-go, it's a no-go. But I would like to at least find out some questions, some answers to the questions.
I guess, is it going to cost us anything to go ahead and proceed with Phase Two and still answer those questions? Because we still pull out.
It's not.
And that's staff's recommendation to continue on.
It's just going to cost the county, you know. I mean, I, well, I don't know if they've already paid for it, regardless of how far we go or.
Administrative cost.
The cost of that study has already been prescribed. And it comes in different phases. So going back and asking questions doesn't cost you or the county any more money. I'm not sure how much more we can get out of Wells Fargo. We did talk about, you know, get into the numbers a little more and they were vague. And it was, it was, they kept saying this was a conservative number. Mr. Bowen, they actually have a pharmacy, they do a pharmacy benefit management. And I think they base that off of their algorithm. So they knew that that 1.2 is at least out there based on what they do. But somebody else in the market could beat that cost.
If I may suggest, go back to Wells Fargo and specifically ask, what does your pharmacy benefit management provide that is not provided currently by health insurers such as Anthem? And how then is that going to generate this $1.2 million? I think there, I would be surprised if they'll give you a direct answer. I'm very honest.
Yeah, I'm not so, I'm not so sure it was really tied to what they're actually providing as much as it was in the formulary rebates that when they went out to bid, there was a higher degree of that rebate that was received or recognized.
Yeah, well, see, here's the problem with the rebate. And you don't realize this, but if Express Scripts goes out and they go to Merck and says, we want to buy these drugs from you and we're going to run them through CVS or whatever pharmacy you want, or we're going to require a new mailer, which may be more likely the case. And Merck says, well, okay, you give me this kind of volume, I'll cut you a deal in 28. Instead of 40 cents a tablet, it'll be 28 cents a tablet. Now, what's going to happen is the pharmacy management company says, well, I can get it for 28. I'm going to sell it for 40, and I'm going to keep the profit. Where is the benefit to us? Where are we going to benefit from that? Are they going to give us a percentage of the cut of their bracket? Those are the kinds of detail that I don't think they're willing to talk about. They can't really, they cannot guarantee that Express Scripts is going to do that or any other third-party pharmacy management company. There are reasons to use pharmacy management companies and there are reasons not to. I do not see the benefit currently unless they can guarantee a certain percentage of that cut comes back into the system. And I, historically, they don't provide that. Historically, that's not, not even, they won't even tell us what that percentage is, which is guaranteed.
I believe their answer would be based on the work that they do themselves. They believe that's the number that they would come up with and that another might beat that price. But you're not going to know that until you put it out.
Yeah, now, keep in mind, are they going to be allowed to bid on us?
That's something we haven't talked about yet.
Because they have inside information. That would be a conflict of interest, I would think. So I would think it would have to be prohibited from bidding on it.
Well, the county's going to have the same. They should have the same question. So we'd have to collaborate with them and.
Madam Chair, if I can make a comment. I think the question has come up, do we have a consensus to proceed with Phase Two? And I don't know if we do or not. But I'll tell you, I'm good with going on with Phase Two and still answer these questions because if we don't go on to Phase Two and we decide to make this change eventually in the future, we've just backed up everything by not continuing. And we're not losing anything by continuing.
I'm okay with going forward. I want to make sure that we address the concerns that Dr. Vivian is raising.
I agree.
Now, the other piece is if we put this RFP out there and you have four or five bids out there, do we have to pick one or we don't have to pick any?
They, we would evaluate the bids, but then it would come to you with whoever the win, you know, the one that's selected for you to consider.
We would have to award somebody the bid or can we stay as we are?
But we can stay where we are. We have the ability at the end of Phase Two to say no.
And I'm okay with that, as long as I have options.
Yeah.
Okay. I want to make sure that we, okay, okay. So even though Dr. Vivian may not be with us in the months to come, he will still be around that we can pick his brain.
Yeah, I appreciate his expertise.
Offer that.
Yes, very much so.
Absolutely, do that, do that.
Very much so. Thank you, thank you. So I think you have a consensus to move forward and we will move forward cautiously.
And staff will work on answering those questions and we'll contact all of you to follow up as well.
Sounds good. Okay, okay.
That concludes our presentation.
Thank you. If there's anything else that needs to come before the board before we go into a closed session? Yes, sir. Give me a break, yes. Okay. Wanting to go into a closed session?
Madam Chair, I move the York County School Board to be in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Retribution of Information Act to consult with legal counsel under Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711A, Section 7, in particular, actual probable litigation involving the school division.
Second, please.
Second.
And Mrs. Ford?
Vote was made by Mr. Richardson and second by Dr. George for the York County School Board to be in a closed session. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Dr. Vivian?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes. Thank you. The board is in closed session.